Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Chetum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Pat?
Here.
Call the other names.
Paulson?
Mansfield.
Mansfield.
(laughing). Both council members, Paulson and Mansfield, have been excused tonight. One's having a baby, the other's sick, so pretty exciting. With that, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Jonathan Dinger representing Grace Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, so great to see all these scouts here. Love to see that. Let's bow our heads up here. Blessed art thou, O Lord, our God, King of the universe, you open your hand and you satisfy the desire of every living thing. As three great world religions approach the most holy of times, it's right and proper for us to give thanks for the provisions of body and soul which you pour out so abundantly upon us. We thank you for this beautiful place that we live, the community in which we are neighbors. We ask this evening, Lord, that you would be with all those who serve us. We thank you for their faithful service to us and their willingness to stand in our stead. We pray for wisdom and for insight. We pray for good counsel. And we pray, Lord, that you would bless our meetings and the endeavors of our hands as we live in this community as neighbors. So, Lord, for productive time tonight, we ask your blessing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. He did not even make a plug for the Grace Lutheran auction going on this weekend.
(inaudible).
(laughing). Perfect, thank you. We'll move to the agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the special city council meeting of February 15, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of February 16 through 29, 2024. C, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for January 2024 showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2024. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lisa Wilmore to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, replacing Rachel Levy, who resigned. Lisa's term will begin March 8, 2024 and expire March 8, 2026.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, Agenda Item Three, Items A through D.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lorick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Oh, that's it. Okay, I forgot, we've only got four here. Before I move on, we have Agenda Item Number Four is Proclamations. We do have four proclamations, but before we do... We have two proclamations. But before we do those proclamations, we also have a scout group in the audience here. Who's the senior patrol leader or the patrol leader? Why don't you stand up, tell us where you're from, what you're doing?
We're from Pocatello. We're a girls' troop, part of the Boy Scouts of America, and we're Troop 363.
363? Haven't you won some events or something like that? You've dominated boys in some of the things, haven't you? You want to brag about that?[293.37][293.37](laughing). I guess they don't want to brag about it.
That means also patrol leader.
Okay. This is a pretty impressive group. That's why I'm having them brag a little bit.
So, we like to do campouts every month and do meetings.
Before you go much further than that, will you tell us who you are?
I'm Adelaide Gertz. I'm the patrol leader for the younger group.
Perfect.
Call ourselves the Beaver Sharks. We take after Barry.[333.12][333.12](laughing).
Nice. Okay?
As a whole troop, we like to go on campouts every month. And one of our best wins that I can remember was a Klondike a couple of years ago that some of our girls didn't go and stay the whole night, but we did the activities and we went and we totally dominated.
Dominated the boys. Great job. Yeah, we can clap for that.[360.52][360.52](applause).
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, what?
Lacy there in the front says that people should not underestimate girls.[370.81][370.81](laughing).
All right, sounds fair enough to me. I can see that Barry was anxious to say something, but we're not going to let him talk because you're the scouts. Sorry, Barry. We're going to move to Agenda Item Four. We have two proclamations. The first proclamation is Senior Nutrition Program Month. That will be read by Councilmember Mangum. The second proclamation will be National Nutrition Month Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day, and that will be Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Mangum?
Whereas, since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local agencies and organizations to serve home-delivered and congregate meals that help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. And whereas more than 10 million older Americans face hunger every year, and whereas local senior nutrition programs help older adults access healthy foods, nutrition screening, education, and counseling, social opportunities, and other supports that encourage well-being, and whereas the National Senior Nutrition Program is an integral part of Pocatello, providing sustenance and so much more to our older community members, especially those most vulnerable to malnutrition, chronic health conditions, social isolation, and whereas the National Senior Nutrition Program is a very positive impact, has a very positive impact on our community and its senior members. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello, of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2024, to be Senior Nutrition Program Month in the City of Pocatello, and I urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them throughout the nutrition services as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
And if you would like... Where's your camera? Oh, you're going to...
She's going to say.
Perfect. Do you want to say a few words? You're welcome to.
I'm Lynda Fairchild, and I'm representing the Senior Center of Pocatello. And I'm accepting this on the behalf of the Senior Center, and thank you for supporting it. Thank you.[569.52][569.52](applause).
Okay. So, a proclamation. Whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in the overall health and physical fitness, and whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and wide-scale efforts to enhance healthy eating practices and physical fitness, and whereas registered dietitian nutritionists are the food and nutrition experts who can translate the science of nutrition to help individuals make unique, positive lifestyle changes. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim the month of March to be National Nutrition Month, and March 13, 2024, to be Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourages all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hopes of achieving optimum health for today and tomorrow. Oh, you should come up too. Why are you sitting down?
I just take pictures.[651.37][651.37](laughing).
Our names are Brianna, and this is Ingrid, and that's our professor, Jen. She's a registered dietitian nutritionist, and we're dietetic students. We just want to thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize RDN Day and National Nutrition Month, and are excited for any chance to promote dieticians in regards to what we do and why we are so crucial to healthcare. So, what do we do? In summary, we diagnose malnutrition. Malnutrition includes the intake of lower or higher-than-normal calories, vitamins, and minerals. Why is this important? Well, it's the imbalance that creates diseases such as rickets and hypertension, which can also worsen chronic illnesses, creating other diseases such as diabetes and cardiovascular diseases due to an increase in inflammation. According to the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, malnutrition in healthcare facilities increases the risk of death, length of stay, and healthcare costs, meaning the more prevalent malnutrition is, the more prevalent disease is. And according to the NIH, well, malnutrition is really prevalent because 53% of impatients are considered malnourished. In summary, dieticians' responsibility is to create healthy, balanced diets on a personal level. This in turn increases the overall economic and social well-being of all.
Currently, however, policy limits a dietitian's ability to help patients. That is why having a dietitian involved in policymaking is so important. That way, we can extend our reach to other communities. These would include patients in prenatal, pediatrics, and especially those desiring to lose weight. By updating our current policies, it helps dieticians obtain reimbursements for services that improve and educate patients on their overall lifestyle habits. As you can see, dieticians are a valuable asset in preventive health, assisting in treating many different diseases. To give you an idea about the dietetic community living right here in Pocatello, there are over 200 credentialed RDNs, many of whom live and work here in southeast Pocatello. We have a local group called Pocatello Dieticians that meets regularly for networking, professional development opportunities, and community-based nutrition events. In closing, we want to thank you again for this great opportunity to read the proclamation for RDN Day and National Nutrition Month.
Thank you.[868.72][868.87](applause).
Thank you. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. March 14, 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. March 21, 5:30 p.m., a council clarification meeting, and 6:00 p.m. a regular city council meeting. Other events, public events to receive comments, or public events to receive community feedback on the city's rebranding campaign. Friday, March 8, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Marshall Public Library. Saturday, March 9, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Franklin Middle School. And Saturday, March 9, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the Elks Lodge. March 8 is Empty Bowls Event at Westside Players from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., sponsored by the Pocatello Arts Council. Its fundraiser will benefit the Idaho Food Bank. And as a reminder, please keep your sidewalks clear of snow and ice, and do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Six is a public hearing vacation of deeded right-of-way Apex Road. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comments regarding a request to vacate public's interest in the remaining deeded right-of-way, better known as Apex Road. The application was submitted by Thomas J. Castelmetis. Staff recommends approval of the application with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any expertise communication in regards to this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And Representative for Mr. Castelmetis, they're not here, okay? So, let's have staff come up.
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The request for the vacation of the easterly end of Apex Road encompassing approximately 19,893 square feet, more or less. The request was submitted by Thomas J. Castelmetis. A historic of Apex Road includes past approved vacations is outlined in the Public Works memo that is within your packet. And as the memo recommends approval of the request with the condition to retain a 25-foot wide easement for the full length of the vacated right-of-way on the southerly side to be retained for future access, water line, and appurtenances to the Center Street water tank, and finds that the request is in the best interests of the public. All the property owners within 300-foot radius of the subject's right-of-way were informed by certified mail. Notice was provided in the Idaho State Journal, and utility and city staff were informed of the petition and requested to provide comments. Staff has not received any comments as the beginning of the public hearing. This concludes my presentation. Would have any questions if you desire?
Yes, Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, Merrill. Could you explain what the original purpose for that right-of-way was and how things have changed and why we are vacating or requested to be vacated?
It becomes, let's see, before my time, I was trying to get, so, a long time ago, then the Thurstons, he was the original deed that deeded the right-of-way. It was a 100-foot right-of-way. And if you looked at the original deed, it crossed and zigzagged and went over to Buckskin. But it also went through some big gullies. So, on paper, it looked beautiful, but in practicality, it wasn't constructable. So, over time, as Mr. Castelmetis and Mr. Isley had purchased it and back and forth with things, it slowly became vacated with the condition that if it ever developed in that area, that there would be a connection made between Center Street and Buckskin that was more applicable for vehicles and for the development. This is the last portion of that Apex Road to be vacated, that could be vacated without hindering access to other properties. And this is that last remainder portion of that that Mr. Castelmetis owns, and the rest of them, like I said, it is a paved stubout, and eventually, if that property does, and when it becomes developable, there will be a right-of-way that will have to be rededicated and utilities put in it and so forth. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, you did. So, right now, it's just really sort of a right-of-way to nowhere.
Yeah, it's just a stubout like any other subdivisions that we're doing that stubs out in preparation for that developable property in the future.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for Merrill? Okay, Merrill, you stated that there were no comments that you'd received that we haven't seen.
That's correct.
Madam Clerk, is there any...
We've had no communications.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatillo, Idaho 83201. I just had a question. When you vacate these properties, do these people getting the properties, do any monetary room pay for it? If not, then I'm opposed. Because it's public property that we've been paying to have maintained and things like that, so I wanted that clarified. Please, thank you. In the name of Jesus.
Otherwise, I'm for it, if you're...
Thank you. Merrill, you want to answer that question for us?
No, there is provisions if there's damages or anything like that, that the state code has provisions that they can assess or do anything like that for financial. This is not the case in this one. This is unplatted, unimproved right-of-way. The city hasn't done anything with it from the time it was dedicated to now.
Super, thank you. Okay. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Mr. Mayor? Yes. Councilmember Nichols?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Six as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, public hearing vacation of rights-of-way South Sixth Avenue and Sherman Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comment regarding a request to vacate the public's interest in two platted right-of-ways located across the west and northwest portion of the City Hall parking lot, specifically portions of South Sixth Avenue and Sherman Avenue. The application was submitted by Matthew Lewis on behalf of the City of Pocatello. I declare the public hearing open. Once again, council, has there been any expertise communication in regards to this? Then we would look for Matt to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner. As noted, application has been submitted by the city to vacate the public's interest in two platted right-of-ways located across the west/northwest portion of the City Hall parking lot. The subject right-of-ways were platted as part of the Pocatello Town Site. Portions of East Sherman Avenue extending northeast from Pocatello Avenue to the intersection of South Seventh Avenue and East Sherman, as well as South Sixth Avenue, in addition to an alleyway we're previously vacated. The subject right-of-ways that remain have been used by the public for many years for parking and ingress/egress to Pocatello City Hall parking lot and various other land uses. No change with parking or access will occur as a result of the vacation. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject right-of-ways were informed by certified mail. Notice was provided in Idaho State Journal, and utility and city staff were informed of the petition and requested to provide comment. Staff has not received any comments as of the beginning of this public hearing. This concludes my presentation, Mayor and Council. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Yes.
What's the benefit of us, of this?
It's just basically to, so, I think Councilman Chetum asked, had a big word in there called encumbered, unencumbered, and basically it just takes it out of the public's interest. It's free, no barriers, anything of that nature. So, it just cleans up what was originally just the platted 1890 plat. Nothing changes as far as what has been going on for many years. The original streets that I had mentioned were probably vacated when they built this building many years ago with osco butt trees, and this is just a remnant of it, so.
Councilmember Chetum and then Nichols?
My question was just answered. I was curious about the unencumbered phrase that was used, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, Matt. So, the section of Sherman Street, just right here in front of City Hall, that's already then vacated, and we're just catching the other sections over there?
Yeah. Got it. I think it's probably really clear if you looked at the map, that's provided, that shows where those remaining right-of-ways are, but you're correct, Councilman, and that remainder has previously been vacated.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Have you received any written correspondence that we have not seen?
I have not.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
No correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then I would look for any application supporting the, anyone supporting the application. Anyone uncommitted to the application? Anyone opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I'm opposed to it because some may be down the road, something might change with regard to city council, I mean, City Hall, that it might become a private thing, and just, again, it's just a legal situation where there wouldn't really be a benefit to us. I just am opposed for those two reasons, thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then I don't think Matt needs to rebut any of that, so with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the vacation of rights-of-way for South Sixth Avenue and Sherman Avenue as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lorick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Chetum?
He says yes, but he's muted.
Yes, yes.[1706.11][1706.22](laughing).
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight, short plat application Gateway North First amended subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Duchene, 2016 LLC to subdivide 0.588 acres, more or less, into four lots. The property is generally located west of Nora Avenue and adjacent south of the Gateway North subdivision. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of the Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the short plat application for Gateway North First amended subdivision as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight. Are there any legal... Nope, that's it.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lorick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, can you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, final plat expiration deadline extension request, Group V LLC. Council may wish to approve the following. A, a request by Kurt Davis with Group V LLC requesting an extension to the two... A, a request by Kurt Davis with Group Five LLC requesting an extension to the two-year expiration deadline for recording the final plat Eagles Landing Division Two pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 16.24.070. B, define the period associated with the extension. Staff has recommended a 24-month extension with all conditions applicable from the original final plat application Eagles Landing Division Two with the new expiration date from the time the city council's decision. And C, pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 16.20.070, the 24-month timeframe for the phase development of the preliminary plat of Eagles Landing Division Three will be reset and will begin on the date of Eagles Landing Division Two council decision extension.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question of staff, if that's okay. So Merrill, if this extension is approved, is there any financial implication or burden on the city?
No, there is no more. This is typically the same as any other subdivision that we're doing. It's just because of the extenuating circumstances of the request and then the new local developer that has purchased it. We're just resetting the time, basically. The, the plans, we've gone through them, looked at them again. Everything is still to standards and to the code. And there is no, no financial implications here until it's all built to city standards and we've accepted it and start to maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, Merrill. So we had given a six-month extension on this previously, right?
Yes, we gave that to Ms. Decker that lives in California. She requested that. She thought she had a buyer and ready to go. That buyer was, I understood, was not from around here. It did not go through, so she pushed it. They said that was in June of last year and she kept it on, kept pushing, and they were able to sell it this January. So the new, the new, new developer, Mr. Davis, builder and developer, is, is requesting that, like I said, just to reset, give him the time that he can get in, get it built as per the plans. Nothing's changing.
Right. And so do you know if this sale has actually gone through? The letter we have from Mr. Davis here says like an upcoming purchase. It's like it hasn't been done yet. Do you know?
I think the, the reason why it was there is he was saying that it was not, he was preparing. Let me get to that part of that letter. I did print that. My discussions with him is that he was, he was gonna pull the trigger and there. He asked staff if, if we had any concerns and that, saying no. He says, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. It's my understanding that he's already purchased that. It has taken us a month to get this put together, his letter and stuff, to get there and get it on the council.
Right. Follow up there?
Absolutely.
Is, is there anything done on the ground or is it just?
It's just bare ground.
Just been platted?
Just bare ground.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the final plat expiration deadline extension request from Group Five LLC as outlined in agenda item nine, portions A, B, and C.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, 2023 State of Idaho Hazmat and Search and Rescue Grants Fire Department. Council may wish to approve the Pocatello, Pocatello Fire Department to participate in and accept funding through the fiscal year 2023 State Homeland Security Grant Program. The annual grant provides support for equipment and training to RRT Six Hazmat in the amount of $20,000 and ITRT Three A Technical Rescue in the amount of $7,000. If approved, council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. There is no local match for, match required.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Council President, go ahead.
I move that we approve the State of Idaho Hazmat and Search and Rescue Grants for the Fire Department as outlined in agenda item number 10. And if approved, authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application Fire Department. Council may wish to approve and authorize commission of the 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant is an annual grant through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The grant funding amount is $75,000 with a required local match of $6,818.18. Funds for the match would be budgeted in the FY 2025 Fire Department Training Line item. Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number 11 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, would you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Airport Grant Application. Council may wish to approve the following grant application and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The grants are A, a grant application to the FAA for the Airport Improvement Program annual entitlement in the amount of $1 million. And B, a grant application to the FAA for a bipartisan infrastructure law grant in the amount of $2,500,000. Both grants require a 6.25% match and will be funded using already budgeted Airport Passenger Facility Charge PFC funds. The project is, the project to be funded under the grant will be reconstruction of the Northeast Aircraft Parking Apron.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item 12, sections A and B as specified.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, bid acceptance award for Community Recreation Center Office Remodel, Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the office remodel project at the Community Recreation Center, CRC, located at 144 Wilson Avenue, to the lowest responsive bidder, Construction Services Incorporated, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead. I'll give it to you next time. It's going to Mangum, but.
I move that we approve the, accept staff recommendation and award the bid for the office remodel project at the Community Rec Center as outlined in agenda item number 13. Authorize your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we hear from Ann before this, please? No question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Butler Parks and Recreation Director. I knew there was gonna be some questions, so I did bring something with me, if that's okay, before we get going.
You want to just give them to me and I'll hand them out?
Yeah. So that's the proposed floor plan. In the upper left-hand corner is the existing layout. And the new proposed layout is the bigger portion down in the lower right-hand corner. Basically, the project is to ensure that we match the current renovation that's going on, paid for by the Health Trust. They've also agreed to pick up the bathrooms at the end of that hallway, which is probably the most expensive portion of the office renovation. It would be the flooring, the new paint walls, new storage area. It would allow us, me to get our executive assistant back in the hallway where the rest of us are. It would move the break room. We've done the best we can to minimize walls, but we also want to make sure it's efficient for what our staff needs.
Councilmember Nichols?
So do I, do I understand that by our doing this, the trust then is gonna step forward even more and do some bathroom work?
Yes. They, their initial offering was about 1.3 million. I don't know how much the bathrooms came in, but I know they've already been signed with the construction company, so.
Got it. Thank you.
I think the total investment's pushing just over 1.4, 1 point, almost 1.5 at this point. So, any other questions for Ann before she leaves?
Yes.
Just one.
Okay, I've got one down here and, and over here. So Mangum.
Do we have an idea on timeframe and impact to the construction being done?
Sure. So right now, they have put down the flooring, the exterior walls. They're gonna, they started today setting the trusses. Once we get the new gym enclosed, we'll have a better timeframe or calendar for when we might be closing the rec center. The initial plan is to do that main hallway back where the gym is, and then we'll probably flip doors. And so we'll temporarily use the emergency door on the north end of the building while they do the renovation of the offices and the front entry. At that time, we'll probably shuffle some staff around. I'm guessing I'll go to the park shop with some other staff. Stacy and our front desk staff will stay at the rec center. But we do anticipate, and that's why we didn't close in August of 2023, we anticipated a closure for at least a couple weeks.
They probably wish they would have put those trusses on last week, not this week.
Before, yeah.
Council President?
I'm glad to see us doing this at the same time. I think that just makes perfect sense. So thank you for bringing that forward and doing this work. And I also, I don't know that they're here or watching, but really want to thank Portent of Health Trust for their partnership and, and support in this project, everything that they're doing for this. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Rick, did you have, did I see your hand go up, Rick? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item 14, bid acceptance for well number 2R and number 22R, replacement wellhouse construction, Water Department. Council may wish to consider recommendations of staff and award the bid for the construction of replacement wellhouses for well number 2R and well number 22R to Star Corporation in the amount of $3,034,500. Authorize the mayor to sign, the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total subject, total subject to legal department
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thought Cory was gonna go for it.
I was joking.
I move that we award the bid for the construction of replacement wellhouses for well number 2R and well number 22R as outlined in agenda item number 14, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mang, or by Nichols. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, Resolution Airport Lease Agreement AmeriGas Propane LP. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with AmeriGas Propane LP for approximately 0.78 acres of property at the airport for the purpose of bulk propane storage and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The lease agreement will be for a one-year term with a one-year renewal option at the rental rate of $4,137.26 per year to be increased annually according to the CPI.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number 15 as listed.
Second.
So we have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Borick? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Local Professional Services Agreement for East Center Street Railroad Bridge Underpass. Council may wish to approve a state and local agreement between the State of Idaho Transportation Department, Civil Science Incorporated, INC., and the City of Pocatello for the East Center Street Railroad Bridge Underpass Project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that, I would move that we approve agenda item 16 specified. Authorize your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Okay, we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
With great pleasure to see this project moving forward, yes.
It is.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Cheatham there.
Yep.
Agenda item 17, inde, excuse me, Independent Audit Service Contract, Deaton and Company. Council may wish to accept recommendations of the Investment and Audit Committee and approve the Audit Service Contract with Deaton and, Deaton and Company, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The agreement will be for a three-year term.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept, accept the recommendation of the Investment and Audit Committee and approve an audit service contract with Deaton and Company and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
We have a motion by President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum.
Can we hear from Gene?
You want to hear from Gene?
Yeah.
All right. Gene, come on up.
He brought his papers and so I was like, he has, he has something to say.
Okay. He always has something to say.
Thanks, man. I appreciate that. In health finance department.
So with Deaton and Company, is this, is everything's checked out? It looks like the, everything checked out and it looked like it's a pretty good deal for us. Now, are we up to date on all of our independent audits for the city?
We will be as of June 30th. So we are up to date, but that will get us to where we're in a cycle where we're actually can close, like on fiscal year 24, we'll be able to have that done 25 March. And so it'll really help us get on cycle. So this is, they've been a great help to us.
Okay, thank you. That was my other question.
Brent? So Deaton was the only proposal we had?
Yeah, we sent it to, so we sent it to four local regional firms, one of the big three. And Deaton was the only one that responded. And just a quick clarification on that, there is such a shortage of accountants, right, that that's the reason. I mean, of course, they'd love to grow their business and they'd like to do that, but they just don't have the staff to expand what they're doing. So I was really happy that Deaton stayed.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, Use Agreement, Matt Lish, Rebels Baseball Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to approve a use agreement with Matt Lish from Rebels Baseball to maintain schedule and prepare ball fields one, two, and three at Lower Ross Park for his teams and others to practice, play games, or tournaments for, from approximately April 2024 to August 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the use agreement with Matt Lish for the Rebels Baseball as outlined in agenda item 18.
Second.
Thank you. I'm giving it to Cheatham. I'm giving it to Cheatham. He's got it. That's a, that's a great job, Cheatham. Way to beat these people here. They're asleep up here, I think. That being said, I, before we vote, I just want to say real quick. That being said, I, before we vote, I just want to say real quick, Matt Lish is doing the Parks and Recreation Department a huge favor in doing this. This is something he takes a lot of pride in, taking care of these ball fields. We'll probably have some people call and complain because it's not their field or whatever, but Matt prepares these. He maintains them. He makes sure they're ready to go for games. He makes sure that the other teams are able to practice on it. It's just a great asset. And so, to have people like Matt in our community that's willing to spend his time and effort is just amazing. So, a big shout out to Matt for that. With that, we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham. Aubriana, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nineteen, Resolution Supporting Marshall Public Library and Surrounding Libraries. Council may wish to adopt a resolution supporting the Board of Trustees and Library Directors of the Marshall Public Library and Surrounding Libraries in their work to establish policies and to provide appropriate access to print and electronic reading materials suitable for two patrons regardless of age.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion, but I would like to hear from our library director. I think this is an important statement of support from our council and our mayor for our public library and libraries in our area and for our library staff and all the work that they do. And I would love to hear, should I make my motion first?
Make a motion first.
Okay. I move that we approve the resolution supporting Marshall Public Library and Surrounding Libraries as outlined in Agenda Item Number Nineteen.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by President Lurick and a second by Mangum, and we would like to hear from our library director.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Eric Seast, Library Director of the Marshall Public Library. This motion is strongly appreciated. It's been a challenging time for us, but we are blessed both at our library and at Cresta Crainer, who's the director of the Port Neff District Library and others in the area, for the work that we're doing. Blessed to have staff whose primary motivation is service of their community and the fact that we have well-trained, well-passionate folks working in the libraries, trying to make the community a better place. So, I appreciate the level of support that one is offering.
Thanks, Eric.
We've had some challenging times, and we seem to have weathered them fairly well.
Could you just mention the STEAM?
Absolutely.
Center that just opened?
We have the Yost Ashcroft Exploration Center that was made possible for us, rebuilding of the children's area that we've had, that's made possible by a very generous donation from their families. We had an opening evening last Friday, and it went very, very well. It'll allow us to do a whole lot more programming and support some of the, both the area itself and some of the equipment and other things necessary to be able to do that well. And so, the possibilities are very strong and endless. In fact, I think one of our goals here is to support creativity and embrace the possibilities. That's part of our city thing, and this allows us to do that. And so, greatly appreciative of that gift, and we look forward to making full use of that.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Eric, thank you for the work that you're doing and the scrutiny that you've been under. I know it's not easy. For myself, I imagine I can speak for everybody up here, but I support the public library. I support the work that you guys are doing. I appreciate the attention to detail. In no way, shape, or form are we promoting any kind of illicit materials or improper materials to children. And I think that as a council, we firmly stand against that, I think unanimously. I can only speak for myself, but, but the work that you're doing, I do support it. I think children have to have an outlet and a place to be educated and to get learning and to let their creativities and their creative juices flow. I think the library is a perfect place for that. So, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Twenty is Items from the Audience. This time, it's been satisfied to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a time limit of 15 minutes for this agenda item and a maximum of three minutes per speaker. We have one that signed up, Nikki Taysom.
Hi, Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. The preamble to our Constitution states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." And as a Christian nation, to me, that means I am. We establish justice. We ensure domestic tranquility. We provide for the common defense. We promote the general welfare. And we do establish and ordain the Constitution of the United States, secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, and do ordain the Constitution, established as the Constitution is the supreme law of this land. Sorry, I didn't get it totally right at the last. I'm here because I have had violations against my constitutional rights, as have others. And I wanted to read this part of Article Number Three, Section Three, Clause Number One under Treason. And I just want you to just be calm. Treason against the United States shall consist only in levying war against them or adhering to their enemies, giving them aid and comfort. No person shall be convicted of treason unless on the testimony of two witnesses to the same overt act or on confession in open court. And then, in the Fifth Amendment, no person shall be deprived of liberty, of life, liberty, or property without due compensation, due process of law, sorry. I can't see very good. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. I bring this up because I just attended part of the Frank Church Symposium and other situations where I've had, been in even meetings here, with allowing the city or county even has made deals with the military, with other foreign nations and other entities, even other states, in violation of these laws. I love everybody. Everybody is precious child of God to me, but our national security is under threat. And we have forces who are being deployed unconstitutionally, placing us and that nation at risk. And some of the agenda items tonight, I know you don't allow them to be commented on, but have added to that concern to me. And speaking in regards to past things regarding the airport and changes that have been made and the militarization going on here in this state and even in this town and county, concern me greatly. My sons have served, my cousins, my scouts clear back to the revolution. I hold the sanctity of this country, our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence preamble, Bill of Rights Monroe Doctrine is sacred.